I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with all the great injustice for all.
Okay, thank you, and welcome everyone to the March 21st, 2016 Bryan City Council meeting. First on the agenda is approval of minutes of the March 7th meeting. Council, you've been presented with those minutes. Have you seen or found any corrections, additions need to be made to those minutes?
I move we accept them as given to us.
I'll second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay, next we will have Treasurers' Report. Lori, please.
The council's been presented with the clerk Treasurers' Report for the month ending February 29th, 2016.
Any comments, council?
I move we accept it.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Hearing of public concerns. I see no one out there that wants to -- it's on the agenda, so we have Dan Yerst that is going to make a presentation, speak on behalf of Chamber of Commerce.
Well, council, as you know, last year we came to you and asked for your permission to have the fireworks in the park, and it was your request that we do that every year, and so we are back again to ask for the council's blessing on that. We had really no issues other than we had to move them one day because of a torrential downpour, but everything went off without a hitch, and so we're asking for that permission again. And I answer any questions you might have about anything, or Ben and I have talked extensively, and things went off great.
I think that one of the things was is that you're going to use the street now?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
You know, and did all the electrical, you got all that under now?
Right. With the rain that was predicted last year, we had to move everything to the street, and -- which was a little bit of a cost to the chamber. We spent about $3,000, $3,200 to move electrical, plus move the fireworks to Sunday night, so -- but it all worked out very well. We heard very good comments from the public, good comments from our vendors, and I think we got good comments from the parks and everybody that attended. And so we have made the arrangements to go ahead and move the electrical there permanently. The panels that we are currently using are really outdated, and they were costing more to fix them than to keep them running, so we have -- we'll be using the same panels that we use at Jubilee time, where we'll be able to screw them right into the ground and have them ready to go. No cost again to the parks or the city. We're going to fund that all ourselves through the chamber, and we've got plans, and things are going well with that, too. Chamber has approved that, and I think Ben has approved that also, yes.
Did moving the fireworks to the park, did that help the vendors any?
Yes, they were all very, very pleased with that, yes. In fact, we heard nothing but great comments about that. The only issue that, like I said, we ran into was the rain, having to move it from Saturday to Sunday. Let's hope that doesn't happen again, but we do have that capability to do that with -- that's our contract for the fireworks. That's how that works.
So the trees weren't in the way?
No, and I think people will get used to that, and we don't have to worry about that, as long as they sit in a place where the tree's not in the way. And we can use a lot more ground fireworks at that point, too, that are a little bit safer, and a lot more bang, too, is what I consider, so.
Okay, any other comments?
Good, thank you, sir.
All right.
Thanks.
Do we need to pay that?
Do we need to make a motion?
I'm doing a motion.
Right, I said do a motion. Okay. So we will entertain a motion to accept the request from the Bryan Chamber to have the fireworks again in the park this year.
So moved. Second.
Rick?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Abstain.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay. All righty, next we have a resolution, so Lori, would you please number and read?
Resolution number nine, 2016, a resolution approving the community reinvestment area tax exemption application as submitted by David W. Swanson.
Mr. Swanson, Davenport, 205 West Beaman Street, will be doing a warehouse addition. They plan on starting right away here and completing it this summer yet. Cost for the -- estimated cost for the project is around $330,000.
It's going to have three to five additional employees in 2016.
I believe that's what he stated in his letter.
Three to five, three to five additional employees in 2016.
Yep. Kind of goes together with his office project that's currently going on that he has here for.
This is being added to a building that's already there?
Correct.
Because it says addition?
Correct.
So, the building permit that you just handed us tonight, that is -- goes with this resolution nine?
Yes, that'll be -- yes.
So it's separate from the other building permit that's coming up?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
So we got to vote on both of these at this time then?
No, just do the resolution now, and then I'll do the permit now.
Okay. I move we accept the resolution nine. I don't know if I said that correctly.
Want to suspend it, is that what we want to do?
Oh, we got to suspend, all right, I move we suspend then, I'll start it out.
I'll second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Abstain.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay, all right, move to a -- okay, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Abstain.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay. So now, next we have a building permit, and Andrew, you want to take care of that.
Okay, the first one I have is for Bard Manufacturing, 1914 Randolph Street here in Bryan. Steven Hour Construction will be doing the work. They are doing a lunchroom renovation. State construction type is 2B, use group is F1, cost for the project is $75,000, renovating just under 2,600 square feet.
Okay.
Questions on that one? The second is for David Swanson, Davenport, 205 West Beaman Street. Rep. Rosebrook Incorporated will be doing the work. State construction type is 5B, use group F2 and S2, cost for the project $330,235. They are adding 8,360 feet of warehouse space.
Do you see any issues with either one of these?
Nope.
Can we do both of these together?
I think so.
Move that we pass both of these.
I move that we approve the work permit.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Second.
Judy said it first.
Oh, she did. Okay, I'll second with that.
Okay, Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Andrew.
You'll get it.
Okay, next we have employee status change in the fire department and Chief Siders.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I've got a couple of different groupings here. The first grouping has to deal with end of probation, and then the second grouping has to do with change in pay grade. I would like to start with the end of probation and ask council, how do you want to do this? Do you want to do this individually, or do you want to do them together?
Do you have a question?
I do not.
It's up to council, approve them all, or have them explained?
Sorry.
State all the names and then make it one motion.
Okay, we can do that. Last year, I had requested that council reclassify Jason Mannan and Joel DeLong to the position of firefighter 2 in accordance with the employee handbook. Also, at that time, Jason and Joel were to serve a six-month probationary period, again, in accordance with the employee handbook. As of today, that probationary period is up, and I'd ask council to place them into regular status effective today.
I move we accept that request.
I'll second.
Keith?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you like me to do the second item in the same way?
Yep.
All righty. Recently, firefighters Derek Allen, Alex Campbell, and Ryan Hake have completed their firefighter 2 certification class and have been issued their firefighter 2 card from the state of Ohio in accordance with the volunteer pay ordinance number 70 from 2006, based on their qualification that qualifies them for a change in their current pay grade from pay range seven to pay range nine. I would ask that you allow me to place them into the appropriate pay grades for their certifications effective today.
I'll move that we accept.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyhow, now we on the agenda is number seven, and that is resignation of police -- in the police department and Chief Willis.
Evening. At this time, I'd like to ask council to accept the resignation of Sam Yo from the Bryan Police Department effective today, March 21st, 2016.
I move we accept the resignation.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and now, permission to hire patrols.
Miss Council, at this time, I request permission to begin our hiring process to hire a patrol officer to fill the vacancy that was created by the resignation of Samuel.
This involves posting it on the inside and following the procedure?
Yes.
Now, I know when we do this, we go through the civil service and all that, so -- and I don't remember how long ago it was that we just hired a patrolman, but so, do we go back to that list and go right off of that list then again?
Yes, it's good for two years. It was just given last year. We still have three or four people that are eligible on the list.
Okay, okay, so let's say you have three people. Do you go back and interview those three people, or do you take the second person or whoever it was on the highest grade there, or how does that work?
We go back and we do the background on all of them, and those three or four interview them and go through that process.
Okay.
I move that we go ahead and try to hire new patrolmen.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is the resignation due to retirement in the Parks Department, and Mr. Dominic.
Thank you. Unfortunately, this evening, I come to you with the resignation slash retirement of Duke Hutchins from the Bryan Parks and Recreation Department. He's been with the city for 31 years, and will be retiring at the end of April.
You're going to have a hard time filling his spot.
Yeah, that's -- it won't be an easy one.
With regret, I will make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay. And then, next on the agenda is permission to post for the park maintenance position.
Yes, we would like to start the process of trying to find somebody to fill that position. Obviously, we are starting to go into our extremely busy time of the year, so the sooner that we can get this process started, hopefully the sooner we can find a qualified and successful candidate to help us with our spring activities that we have getting ready to get going.
Have you had anybody approach you yet?
No, this is really other than what he has chose to let people know. We've kept it to ourselves until we met with council. So, we felt it was important you guys knew first.
Well, I move that we see if we can find a replacement.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Rick?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy? Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Good luck.
Thanks. I'm afraid I'm going to need it.
Now, yet, on the agenda, number 11 on the agenda is hiring of parks seasonal part-time employees.
Yeah, in front of you, you have our -- what would be our first list of seasonal part-time employees. These are our mowers, park maintenance guys. This is actually one council meeting early. Typically, I wait till the first council meeting in April, but the weather, the weather is what it is, and it's time that we get moving forward and get things cleaned up and moving in the right direction. So with your permission, I would like to go ahead and hire these people. They would be able to fill out paperwork as early as tomorrow and start as soon as tomorrow afternoon, if that's their wish. So we will be in contact with them once they are approved, so we can start getting things cleaned up and moving in that direction.
Almost all of these are ones that have worked before, aren't they?
Absolutely, they are. They are all people that have worked for us in previous years. Yep, yep, none of these are new.
I move for that motion.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
On number 12 is the hiring of the Fountain City Cemetery.
I'm going to take that tonight.
You got to take it.
Tyson's out of fire again tonight, so we're requesting, first of all, that folks do look at Fountain Grove, and we're probably two weeks earlier than normal, but because the grass is growing so far, we have to get the graves cleaned and cleaned up so we can start the mowing process. And Tyson is requesting to rehire Jerry Lemons and Bill Dority as the seasonal employees for the cemetery. Jerry has been with the cemetery since 2007, and Bill since 2011. They do a fine job getting that cleaned up and ready for Memorial Day and then the whole summer. So our request is to approve the hiring of those two.
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Carrie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Counsel, this is the 2015 Annual Report for the Bryan Police Department. Last year, we handled 317 car crashes, issued 891 traffic citations, issued 2,066 traffic warnings, made 440 criminal arrests, and handled 8,839 calls for service. This is our organizational chart, starting with the chief and the captain on down through Last year, we had six appointments to the department between the officers, reserve officers, and dispatchers. We also had six resignations, one officer, four reserve units, and a dispatcher. This is a list of the employees of the police department. Currently have 19 officers, that's including three sergeants, the captain, and the chief, two records dispatch clerks, four full-time dispatchers, one part-time dispatcher, four reserve officers, and our chaplain, Roger Blau. Community relations, that officer is Matt Arnold. He handled 37 juvenile programs, 17 programs with schoolteachers, four programs involving adult juveniles, and then he participated in the Nationwide Traffic Program. He also handles any updates involving businesses, after-hour businesses with the key holders. He did 220 of them, and then various safety programs, Halloween Party, Safety Town, Operation This is also related to the community relations officer. He also handles our website, the Bryan Police Department website. He just has stats up there. For 2015, we had 9,697 visits to our website. He also has other countries throughout the world that has visited our website, and quite a long list of them there. January was the busiest time of visits, and Monday was the heaviest visited day. Then we also have the Twitter, Word process, Flickr, and Facebook. Bicycle patrol, bicycle patrol, they handled 123.5 hours last year, rode 253 miles. They handled four complaints, 12 assists, four open doors, two traffic citations, six traffic warnings, and they had 60 hours of training. That is a list of our current bicycle patrol officers. The stats are down some because our two most active, which is Patrolman Williamson and Patrolman Plots. Officer Williamson went into the detective bureau, so she was not able to ride a bicycle. And then Officer Plots is one of our training officers, and he was involved in training new officers last year, so he was not able to ride. Officer Veers is also a big rider. He's not on that list, but he is with the man unit, so he's not able to ride a lot. The bottom three, Officer Garza, Doctor, and Zook, they have been certified right at the end of last year, so we look for a lot of activity out of them when the weather gets nice.
What month do you usually run your patrol, bicycle patrol?
As soon as it, the weather clears up, right up until it gets cold. They have gear, different type of gear for like the colder weather and everything, so they're out there as long as they can take the weather. Our chaplain, Roger Blau, some of the things that he does for the department, he comes in rides with the officers, talks to dispatchers, also provides counseling to any of the police department employees if needed. He gets called out to counsel family members that have lost a loved one. He assisted last year at the Bryan Middle School on the bomb threat, both that day and the day after, for any counseling of kids or employees that needed. Then he also attended the East Central Regional Training Conference in Fort Wayne. Last year, the training of the officers, we had a state mandated training hours. Each officer had to be trained at least four hours in certain areas. That was according to the state. For a total, we had 1,169 hours of training. The road officers were also recertified in stationary moving radar, and of course firearms And there also is a online computer training, EO PATA, that the officers can go on, and it provides training online. Our vehicle fleet, we have 11 vehicles, six marked cars, one is a K-9 unit, two unmarked detective cars, one unmarked school car, which is shared with other departments throughout the city, an unmarked captain's car, and an unmarked chief's car. Vehicle maintenance, total cost for maintenance last year was $11,588. Cost per mile driven was seven cents per mile. The total miles for the whole fleet was 166,436 miles. Fuel usage was 11,608 gallons. Total cost, $26,322, which averaged out to 16 cents per mile. Dispatch operations, dispatchers, they operate 24 hours a day, just like the the, uh, patrol officers do. Um, in two thousand fifteen, they handled two thousand six hundred and eighty-seven nine eleven calls, which was down a little from two thousand fourteen. Uh, radio calls was up substantially, seventy-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-three compared to two thousand fourteen, and the radio calls is whenever a dispatcher or a patrolman keys up the mic, then that's counted as a radio call. Uh, phone calls they received was forty-three thousand two hundred and sixty, which is pretty close to the same as two thousand fourteen. Traffic enforcement, uh, citations, including OBI, both adult and juveniles, two thousand fifteen, we had eight hundred and ninety-one, that's, uh, up from two thousand fourteen. Accidents investigated, uh, we investigated one fatality, twenty-eight injury accidents, two hundred and eighty-nine injury, for a total of three hundred and seventeen, and parking tickets, uh, eighty-two were written. Alcohol breath test, um, last year, we had some, uh, issues with the intoxicalyzer eight thousand, and, uh, we were not allowed to use it for most of the year. Um, we were able to, in October, get the, uh, BAC machine, which is the one on the right of the screen. Um, it's just the older version of the intoxicizer, but we were able to, to get it, um, and use that from October through December. Uh, and the OBI arrests, um, for two thousand fifteen was forty-eight arrests, and then the total between October and December, when we started using, uh, the BAC machine, again, it, it was thirteen. Uh, before we were able to use the BAC, BAC machine, we had to, uh, take either blood or urine and send it down to the State Patrol to have it tested. K-9 unit, uh, that officer's Corey Nichols, and then, uh, K-9 is Sage. Um, those are his, his stats there for assisting arrests, two, other agencies, five demos. There was eleven, and then the narcotic sniff vehicles, there was eleven, um, total forty-one altogether. Uh, training days in schools, he had fifteen, his total time was eighty-four hours for Detective's office, uh, this is the investigations that Detective Williamson did last year. Uh, she handled a hundred and eight investigations, cleared sixty-six for sixty-one percent. Uh, CVSA, which is a truth verification, um, kind of like a polygraph, there was five of them ran. Uh, we received, uh, three hundred and eighty-two pieces of evidence into the evidence room, and, uh, we were able to destroy or return a hundred and thirty-four pieces of evidence last year. This is just a breakdown of her investigations that she handled, uh, the highest being larceny at nineteen, and then forgery credit card at eighteen, and sexual assaults at, at fifteen. Man unit, uh, this is Officer Jeremy Veers at this time. I handled a hundred and seventy-one cases involving a hundred and forty-one people, thirty-seven probation permission searches, fifty-eight meth labs, dump sites investigated, search warrants, he, uh, had twelve cases, and with a hundred and fifteen people arrested, and two hundred and eighty-nine charges altogether. That is a breakdown of the charges, uh, that he had. Um, as you can see, methamphetamine was still pretty high. Uh, the, uh, middle column is the degree of the felony or misdemeanor that they were charged with, and then how many, uh, charges we actually had with that. And that is another, uh, sheet of his arrests that he had made. Reserve activity, uh, we have four reserves at this time. Uh, they handle crowd control at sporting events, uh, they handle the Bryan Jubilee Parade, Day in the Park, uh, they do have monthly meetings, and, uh, they worked three hundred and sixty-eight hours last year, and, uh, we are always looking for new reserves. If anybody is interested, they can contact either, uh, Sergeant Nyhark or Sergeant Wegel, uh, fill out an application and go through the background check, uh, but we are always looking for new reserves. Calls for service by the year, uh, like I said, we had, uh, eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine calls for service. That's any calls that come in, that gets assigned a number, whether it's investigation, traffic stop, anything like that. Uh, calls for service by day, uh, Friday and Saturday, as you can see, are the busiest days of the week. And then by hour, it's, uh, from four PM until midnight is the busiest time for complaints. And that is our two thousand fifteen report. Any questions?
You, in the past, you've had a lot more reserves, haven't you?
Yes.
But there's only four now. I was thinking it was like double that or something at one point, wasn't it?
Uh, we used to have quite a few, the, I think a lot of the issue is that the, the training at the state is requiring these, uh, reserve officers to go through, um, it's just a lot of training, and a lot of them with full-time jobs and everything just don't have the time to do it.
Even now, I mean, Randy's been sick, so you don't have his services right.
And he was a very big asset for us. He went to all the games, he, he was up there all the time, and, yeah, we really miss him.
Looks like he's getting stronger, though.
Yeah. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Okay, um, any other comments, or, if not, um, there was executive session scheduled, and that has been, uh, eliminated, canceled. We will not have an executive session tonight, so, uh, I'll go around the room. Andrew, you have anything else?
Uh, I have a lot to do, because the speaker's done.
Okay. Chief Siders?
I will do it with that.
Okay. Leroy, you okay?
Yep, I'm fine.
Ready to go, huh?
Yep.
Ah, boy. Mr. Dominic. Okay. Mr. Chappa.
I was there.
All right, Chief Wallace?
I was there.
Anything else? Okay. Start with Council, uh, Judy, anything for tonight?
Just wish Duke the best, hope he enjoys retirement.
Yeah, Ms. Carrie?
I'll second that.
Okay. Rick?
Nothing in addition.
Mr. Keith?
Uh, nothing tonight.
Okay. Ms. White?
I'll second.
Right, Ms. Ronder?
Yes, I'm gonna miss Duke Hutchins. I've got a quick story. My very first day, I had to move a desk into my office, and two men came down being Dick Bo Statter and Duke Hutchins, and I said, "Well, I'd like to get to know you, what's your names?" And he said, "I'm Bo, and this is Duke." And I said, "This sounds like a country western. Are those your real names?" And we hit it off, and been good friends ever since. He's gonna be sorely missed.
Mary, you have anything else? Yeah, pass these down. I got a letter today from the, it's my annual letter. I'm gonna read the minutes from last year's meeting, so you understand here what happened. Mayor Johnson led a discussion with Council as a letter was received from the Department of Liquor Control, stating that, that if there were any issues with regard to liquor permits establishment, objections may be filed. But this is the annual letter that I get, and I got it today, and they're writing to notify us that all permits to sell liquor in the city of Bryan will expire on June first. And if we have any problems or any complaints, uh, we, we would have to go for a hearing in front of the liquor board. And at this time, I think we have nine liquor licenses. It's based on your population, and, uh, our eighty-five, eighty-five fifty-five gives us, uh, nine licenses in the city, and, uh, we have had no complaints on those licenses. So, I'm leading the discussion, and for this year, and does Council have any, have they heard anything, is there any problems with any liquor establishments? This doesn't-
I've heard none, but I'm sure the police has heard a few from different ones, I've seen the paper. Now, these nine, they're not all the same type of license, are they? There's some that are-
Some are for, yes, they're different, yeah.
Yeah, they're different things, yeah.
Issued by the liquor board, and we're at our limit. There's a waiting list for liquor licenses. But if there is no objections, uh, I've heard, heard no one's come forward with any, anything which would give us enough stamina to have a hearing and that kind of stuff, so. So, I see, we have until May the second to respond, right? It has to be, so- Yeah, I, we can even hold this to the next me if anybody hears anything or has anything, but otherwise, if we don't, we just, we don't do anything with it. I called the liquor board today to, to make sure of the procedure, and they said, "Just give the letter to Council," and they haven't heard anything, we don't do anything. Okay. So. All right. Okay, so, I- Anything else? Yeah, I got some other things here. Okay. Get to that here. Uh, first of all, we have the Good Friday slide, and I think that's gonna be upside down, yep. Let me get it turned around here.
Lay down, yeah. Yeah, it's getting better.
It'll come around here pretty quick.
There we go.
Okay, uh, city of Bryan will pick up garbage on Friday, March twenty-fifth. It is Good Friday. City offices will be closed, March twenty-fifth, in observance of Good Friday, but garbage will be picked up as usual. So, we have that slide, and then we have the auction coming up. A reminder, Thursday, April fourteenth, at five o'clock, we'll be auctioning the, uh, EMS building on one oh six Emmett Street, and we'll also be auctioning off the Tahoe that you see there. And any information is available, uh, through Hallegrillity, and it will be published in the, in the paper as far as this information. And once again, I, we're gonna miss Duke. Duke was also, uh, street superintendent, and, uh, he can, he can run just about any piece of equipment. He and Leroy were a good team, they can lay about any kind of brick they wanna lay, and, and so forth, so, we've, uh, these kind of folks we're, we're gonna miss, and we're certainly gonna miss Duke, and be a hard position to fill, so, I wish him the best.
Maybe we can keep him around like we do Leroy.
Well, Leroy, it works if it's warm.
I think he's entitled.
That's all that I had, I guess. I mean, yeah. Okay, all righty, good. I will echo everyone's comments in regards to Duke. Been around him a little bit, and, um, you know, he is dedicated, that's, again, it's, it's a dedicated employee that we have for the city that we're sorely gonna miss, so, um, appreciate everything he's done over the years. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So mo.
I'll second. Keith?
Yeah.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Good, thank you. We adjourn. Counsel, who wants to?